Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and the city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note that the governing body rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found on topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, planning staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is also allowed, provided that the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Again, comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters related to the commission business, provided that the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Cowt?
Here.
Mr. Nager?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Hanon?
Here.
We have enough for a quorum.
Next is approval of the minutes for the May 19th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Abstaining.
Mr. Cowt?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Minutes pass.
Great. Just to note that item E.A., which is going to be the 30th in Topeka, is not going to be under discussion items. That is going to be under our action items, so we'll just do it after the other three action items. With that in mind, does anyone have any declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications on any action items tonight? All right. Seeing none, then we will move on to action item D.A., which is Myers Place.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. This is a request to amend the zoning classification from R1, single-family dwelling district, to M1, two-family dwelling district. The property is 16 acres of land, contains five parcels, and is located at the south or near the southeast intersection of Northwest Lyman and Northwest Vale Road in the City of Topeka. The applicant's proposed duplexes on the site. It was platted as part of a single-family residential subdivision back in 1995. The owner is now desiring to build duplexes on a portion of the property or all the property. Next slide demonstrates what the existing conditions of the property. It's vacant or used as farmland and agricultural land. Just to the west of the site is a PUD that's for a single-family subdivision that's developing either for duplexes or single-family residential. To the north of the property is a mobile home park, and to the east of the property is vacant land and a mobile home park. South is vacant. The land use map for this area lies within the North Topeka West Neighborhood Planning Area, designates this for low-density residential. Property is within the range of that acceptable density at five dwelling units per acre maximum on the existing platted lots, and staff is recommending approval. I'm open for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Cowt?
Thank you. Go ahead, come up with something. And the parking requirements that are listed in staff report, those are the requirements. Obviously, they're in place right now, and as we all know, the parking regs for residential are in process. So if those, if new regulations are adopted, will they be made applicable to this project?
Yeah, so if any new regulations are adopted for parking and those new standards were applied.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one question about the flood hazard issue mentioned on page three. It says that it lies within Zone X, area of minimal flooding due to levy protection. That means that there's not a concern for flooding, or that there's some concern, but it's not severe, or what exactly does that mean?
It is in most of North Topeka, it's in that area that's protected by the levy. That means with, due to the levy being in place, there is not a flooding have, it's not in the flood hazard area.
All right. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to the applicant or representative of the applicant.
Chad Gerhurt with Betis Companies. I don't have much to add from what Ann presented. We'd like to use the property to build duplexes on. As she said, it's platted already, 40 separate lots with three separate streets, two northwest streets, one east-west street. Yeah, as you can see on that map. Like she said, the property to the east is already Zone M3. The PUD is a mix of M1 and the single-family. If there were any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Then, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this one. Any discussion by commissioners?
It's infill development, taking ag land out of production, but it's still infill, I think. And obviously, it's addressing a very serious housing need, so it looks like a good project.
Any motion?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cowt, second by Commissioner Nelson. Any discussion? All right.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cowt?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. The next is item D.B., which is 625 Southwest Polk. Turn it over to staff.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Tonight, I'm presenting two items. The first is Z2502, 625 Southwest Polk. This is by Kalupi Investments LLC. It's a proposal to rezone this half-acre parcel on Polk Street from O&amp;I2, office and institutional, to M3, multiple-family dwelling. Currently, the property is vacant, has been since 2023. Prior to that, it was used by a church. It's just M3 zoning, so there's no site plan or anything associated with it, but the developer has talked a little bit about potentially a 12-unit apartment building on the site if the rezoning is approved. The character of the area, it's really dominated by multifamily residential, different forms. There's some single-family conversions, some duplexes, several kind of townhomes, apartments. There's a little bit of single-family use and then some limited commercial uses along Sixth Avenue. The future land use plan, it designates this area, this whole part of the neighborhood, as medium-density residential. The NIA has made efforts in at least the past few years to acquire this land and work with Shawnee County Parks and Rec to use this land for some kind of park or open space. There are, there is a statement from Shamika King Sims that was included in the packet, Historic Old Town, NIA President, as well a public comment submitted to Topeka Speaks. And I think kind of the neighborhood's concerns were also covered in the summary and notes of the neighborhood meeting we had. But that's not reflected on the land use map, but it is something the neighborhood has been considering. Given all the factors, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from office institutional to multifamily. And for any questions?
Oh, a quick question. I was a little puzzled. Are we still within the 30-day period that the owner has given to the NIA, or is that run, has that expired?
So, the neighborhood meeting, we had the neighborhood meeting on June 4th, and that's when that promise was made.
Okay.
That statement. I don't know if that statement was intended to be from that date or from the date of any potential rezoning. Do you recall, Mike?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we will move on to the presentation by the applicant or the representative.
I don't believe they have a representative today.
All right. Then we will keep moving to any public testimony, if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this potential rezoning item. Go ahead and come forward.
Thank you, governing body. Going to the NIM meeting, sorry, half my face doesn't work, fell's fuzzy, so please just be patient. Going to the NIM meeting, I think it's very important to pay attention to what the NIA is saying in that statement. That is a very highly condensed area. There's a lot of kids, there's a lot of problems in those areas because of the high population. We can't look at, just because the land use map wants a higher density in the center of Topeka, we can't also just say that we don't want to put any more apartment buildings on the southwest side of town and force it all into the central, center of Topeka. We need to be able to try to bring attraction back to these areas, overpopulation, high land use, those type of things. Another apartment building while being surrounded by eight other ones wouldn't surpass anywhere else in this community and in this town, but they allow, they're trying to allow it to be done here. The only concern really is once the zoning is done, is that it goes purely into the planning department's hands, and the neighborhood has no more say. So you have this other, we have a bunch of rundown apartment buildings there already that could be rehabbed and redone and reused, and they're choosing not to do that. They want to put something new for it to do the exact same thing. We see this happen again and again. We have investors here, like Eucalyptus Properties, that comes in and buys these things up as soon as they're built. The concern is, is that they own quite a few properties in that area already, and so we can expect this trend to continue when moving forward. So I would ask that you really do consider the neighborhood and its health and the consideration on your vote today. That's all I have. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Just a sec. We have a question for more of the commissioners.
Sorry.
No worries.
Can you tell me where the nearest green space is? There is no green space in that NIA. It's actually the only NIA without a park as of right now. That's why we're working really hard. Personally, I am working with the county commissioners and Rich Eckert and them on trying to see about the legalities and about acquiring the space. Realistically, as July, if this goes forward, and July 5th, the governing body does vote for this to happen, we pretty much lost all bargaining power. As office use, it has sat vacant. It used to have a church on it. There's many other usage and zonings that could be beneficial in this area other than M3. The, we, ultimately, of course, they want a green space in the area, and that's ultimately the best goal for trying to put there, especially with the high population of kids and the impact we see that green spaces give to neighborhoods and how they better them. If you look just north in Ward Mead and Potwin, look how beautiful the areas are right next to the parks and the green spaces compared to the areas further away. We need to give every NIA those opportunities, and that's why I bring this to you and saying that we really got to consider the neighborhood health and the safety of the kids and the overall beautification of Topeka in a project like this, not just the land use map.
It sounds as if you're active in the NIA. Can you tell me about the demographics within those couple block area?
So, a lot of it is, we have a lot of Section 8, we have a lot of, we have a lot of lower-income areas. We have conglomerate-owned apartment buildings. That's kind of what a lot of that area is already. There is some mixed use, the Berthright Center, the C4 up near Sixth Street. When you go to 8, you have more of the churches and everything. So when we see these projects, that's kind of the demographic we see there, and we need to kind of benefit those people, not just pack them in. We're doing, in this type of example of a project, we're doing poverty stacking in an area that doesn't need to continuously be poverty stacked. We need to kind of spread the wealth on that a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you know, has the NIA identified any other lots in this area that'd be potential for green space?
So, the problem is, is when you look at the Shawnee County Parks and Rec expectations, they aren't looking to expand any parks any less than five acres because of how much, how much work and stuff that goes into it. Talking to Tim Laurent, at the head of parks, he does not see a problem with this because this parcel with the other southern two parcels, which don't seem to be an issue on getting as of right now, we're still getting updated day by day on how this process is working through. But it equals out to one acre, because with parks, you can count street to street, quarterline to street. So, and they are perfectly fine with that, especially for serving that area. And with there being no green spaces, they're willing to make that exception and work towards that. So, that's where, they have in the past identified other areas, and there was other community partners like Claire Ferrell, they came forward saying they were going to make green space and then they were going to just turn it into a parking lot. So, as these houses and lots and stuff come vacant, it either gets bought up by the hospital or Claire Ferrell or other investors like this that live out of state, they're just trying to turn a quick dollar, not caring about the people that actually live in that community.
Can I get you to state your name and your address real quick for the public?
I'm sorry. My name is Tyler Wyble, and I'm a property developer here. My address is actually in downtown, which is 520 Southeast Fifth Street.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And I'm also on the sign-in sheet.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something that I think is kind of...
Something that's an important point. This is not the downplay the NIA's desire for a park or this site is a parks space, but just to be clear, the zoning, it's, a park is permitted by right under the current zoning, it's also permitted by right under the proposed zoning. So I think that, I believe the issue for the neighborhood is that if this is rezoned, it just makes it more likely that it can get developed. But it doesn't necessarily mean the zoning would prohibit a park, just to be clear.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this one? Seeing none, we're going to move on to discussion by the commissioners. Commissioner Pearson, sorry.
I guess I...
No, no, no. I thought you were reaching for the mic.
I was reaching for my drink, but I will make, I will make one comment. Yes, I understand that the rezoning will not preclude it from becoming a green space, but I think part of our responsibility is creating spaces and places in the city that make it habitable and livable. And if you've been in that area or walked in that area, it is very already dense, and from what I've observed, he's correct, that there is no other green space within that NIA. So, while I understand the rezoning would not make it, so there couldn't be a park there one day, this current zoning means there can be a park any day right now. So, just my comment.
Commissioner Cowt?
As a staff, the, are you surprised the applicant is not here? Were you anticipating the applicant would not arrive?
What's the question, sir?
Did you have any information regarding the applicant not being here tonight?
The applicant lives in Florida, so that's, that's probably, that's probably the main reason why she, why she is not here.
And she does, she doesn't have a local representative, she's done this process remotely.
It just strikes me as odd that someone would ask this to be on the agenda during a time period when they're considering the sale of the property to somebody else and then not appear before this commission to answer questions and respond to the neighborhood. So, I'm inclined to either offer a motion to table the matter or to disapprove, depending upon the wishes of the commission.
Any other?
This is more of a question for staff. Depending upon how the vote goes today, is the applicant able to come, and let's say the property is never sold, is the applicant able to come back at a later date, depending upon how things go to rezone? Because my thought process, my concern is, is nothing happens with the space. You know, I think definitely having green space, I grew up in that area, I think having green space is admirable, but I also don't want the property to sit vacant if a green space isn't able to come. So just what is, what are the options? And maybe this is kind of a vote to maybe table it, is, if it doesn't go through today, is the applicant able to come back if it doesn't sell to rezon, or is that just done?
I don't think I know the answer to that. I think that if this was deferred, you know, the applicant would have the option of being here at a future meeting. I'm not sure that answers your question, but...
I guess if, if, let's say it goes through, and I'm not making any assumptions, I'm just wanting to know, what is the scenario in the case that it doesn't get approved today? That we vote to not rezon it, that we leave it in the current zoning, allow for whatever opportunity that may happen? If it doesn't come to fruition, that a green space is going to be there, can they come back at a later date and request rezoning again after disapproval?
I believe, I believe they have to wait a year.
Okay.
I think there is something in our zoning code. I'm not positive about that, but I think they have to wait a certain period of time if it gets denied.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I've always said, I'm sorry to beat this point to death, but I think on any application where the applicant does not come before the commission and stand for questions from the commission and respond to comments from the public is the proper step under normal, unless they're exigent circumstances, is to table the matter. So, I don't want to cut off the conversation, but I would move to table.
I think if they don't show, to talk about the concerns going on, I would kind of disagree with that, and I think we should take a vote. I mean, they're not here, they're not here to discuss it. They didn't come for a reason. They didn't send a representative, there are plenty of representatives in Topeka to talk about it. They could have hired somebody.
Well, so we do have a motion for now. So, is there a second for that motion? And if not, then we can discuss others.
What exactly is the motion?
The motion for now is to table the application.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something?
Yes.
If you are going to make a motion, my suggestion is to say it's either tabled, or the motion is to table it indefinitely, or to table it to a date certain. If it's tabled indefinitely, then when it comes back on the agenda, we would have to re-advertise a public legal notice. If it's to a date certain, we do not have to do that.
I would like to offer an amended motion to table then to the date of the August meeting. I am not going to be here in July meeting, and I would like to attend.
So if it's tabled till August, does that mean you're expecting them to be here in August to speak to this matter? Is that what I'm understanding with that motion?
The question is, if the motion is to table until August, is the expectation that then the applicant or some representative of the applicant would be here in August?
That would be the anticipation, and I think the commission would take appropriate action if nobody, if the applicant did not show up or did not withdraw the application because the sale to the, to the neighborhood folks went through. I mean, if that happens, then the applicant would be, the application would be withdrawn, I'm sure. Have to be withdrawn.
Commissioner Brooks?
I'll second that motion.
All right.
And I would, I would add, just, I, to me, they went through the application process. Obviously, they're not here. We all have the opinion they should be here. I assume it's not required by law that they're here, part of the code that they're here for that. So, I feel like we have to be careful about holding up that, to that standard that's not necessarily what we feel, even though if they really want it to pass, they should probably be here. But I would like, I would hope that in that two-month time, some things can work out with the sale and, you know, and it can be a little less muddy. We can have a little more clarity on the future of the land use potentially, and then we can probably make a better decision if we wait. That's at least why I'm going to second the motion.
Then we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to table this one until the August meeting? Seeing no, no more discussion, we'll move on to a vote on the motion.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cowt?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Motion to table it to August passes.
And we will move on to action item C., which is Southeast 21st and Adams. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you, commissioners. This zoning case, Z2504, it's by Abraham Real Estate LLC at Southeast 21st and Adams. Concerns the northwest corner there, and the proposal is to rezone from M1, two-family dwelling district, and M2, multiple-family dwelling district, to C2, commercial. The intent is to develop a gas station, convenience store. The total proposed rezoning, including that internal right-of-way, which if this rezoning goes through, the applicant plans to vacate that through a plat and then develop where that right-of-way would be, it's about 3.0 acres, 3.8 acres in total. So the area, primarily residential, mostly single-family, there are some townhomes and apartments kind of concentrated around the intersection of 21st and Adams. There's the mobile home park to the north, and then there is, as far as commercial uses go, there's a family dollar just to the south on the corner of 21st and Adams, and a few other commercial uses further east on 21st. The future land use plan has this area designated for medium or high-density residential. So this is, one of the factors we considered in our recommendation is there is an existing sanitary sewer main that runs through the site. It would be very costly to relocate that main, so the anticipated development, if, if this is approved, is that it's going to...
Concerns the northwest corner there, and the proposal is to rezone from M1, two-family dwelling district and M2, multiple-family dwelling district, to C2, commercial. The intent is to develop a gas station convenience store. The total proposed rezoning, including that internal right-of-way, which if this rezoning goes through, the applicant plans to vacate that through a plat and then develop where that right-of-way would be, it's about 3. acres, 3.8 acres in total. So the area, primarily residential, mostly single-family, there are some townhomes and apartments kind of concentrated around the intersection of 21st and Adams. There's the Mobile Home Park to the north, and then there is, as far as commercial uses go, there's a Family Dollar just to the south on the corner of 21st and Adams, and a few other commercial uses further east on 21st. The future land use plan has this area designated for medium or high-density residential. So this is, one of the factors we considered in our recommendation is there is an existing sanitary sewer main that runs through the site. It would be very costly to relocate that main, so the anticipated development, if, if this is approved, is that it's going to avoid this main. So we are recommending approval, but with the condition that the red portion shown on the map and described in the staff report, that that portion be excluded from the rezoning. Right now, today, that portion is M1 duplex. It's on the corner of Madison Street and 21st. Madison is kind of a, a little stub street, but we feel that that still has good development potential as a duplex that could run on the Madison, and that this would still give the applicant plenty of room to, you know, develop the site with all the utility challenges and traffic challenges. So with that, are there any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cow.
Paul, I don't know at what point the communication from Ms. Bat, Angela Bat, came in, but a question to you, have you seen it?
Yes, I have, yeah.
Is there anything in here that changes your recommendations in, in the staff report?
Yeah, we, Ms. Bat attended the neighborhood meeting as well, and she expressed similar concerns. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we kind of talked about the traffic engineering of it, how that kind of comes into play during the site plan review, where, you know, safety and traffic conflicts, you know, that's kind of an engineering domain thing. And then some of the public safety concerns as well are a little bit, I don't think planning can directly address those.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we will move on to a presentation by the applicant or their representative.
It's wonderful to see you guys again. We, we don't, I don't have anything to add. I, we, we discussed it and we talked with Mike on, after the NIM meeting about taking that one section, leaving it M, was, did you guys say the M2?
That one's M1.
So it'd be changing to M2 and then, or is it M2 now?
It would remain M1.
It remains M1. The rest of it becomes C2, so the M2 becomes C2. Yeah, so we, we're fine with that. That one's perfect for putting a duplex on or utilizing, is that Madison Street? So we'll, we, we have no problem with the plat when we replat it during the rezoning process, and as, we understand the concerns with traffic and all that. That's one of the big reasons we were, have so much of it going to C2, is, as, as you can saw by the sewer main, not only that, but also entrances and exits are very important when developing these things, and we see all around Topeka that we have a lot of C-stores that take up a lot more land than they need just for that traffic clearance. So we're not coming in the community trying to harm anybody, we're not trying to, you know, change the face of the neighborhood, we're just trying to bring in a utility for the neighborhood that, that will help improve and give them a little bit, something added, you know, improve the quality of life a little bit. And if I need to repeat my name, I'm Tyler Wyble, I'm a Wyble Property Development here in Topeka.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any objection to the city requiring a traffic study?
We, we talked with them on the inlets and outlets and stuff, we've been talking with the, the traffic engineering in the state of Topeka, they've talked about needing it, that the, using it all for C2 has talked about, and with proposed changes in 21st and Adams and all this stuff, we, we're, we're heavily in conversation with the city on traffic. So needing a traffic study, it's, we're trying to really, we know that's going to be there, we're going to try to bring down the grade of traffic study more on the pedestrian level type, type deals.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Easy enough, thank you.
Is there any testimony from the public on this application?
My name is Jonathan Smith, I live at 2526 Southeast Colorado Avenue, only about a mile and a half away from this project. I would pass it every day on my commute to work. I'll touch on this a little bit, my own comment, but the comment that staff referred to earlier from Ms. Angela was also relayed to me at the Central Highland Park Neighborhood Improvement Association, of which I am an officer. Today, I am not speaking on behalf of that NIA. Central Highland Park NIA is just down the street from this project. I want to start off by saying that I do support this project, I appreciate a small business investing in our community, and we ought to return the favor by building a relationship with the business, Tony's, and its owner, Mr. Michelle. I want to state that I support this zoning change, but a serious effort needs to be made in regard to entrances and exits on 21st and on Adams. Truly, Adams and 21st Street, with all the money that the city does not have, should be rebuilt with active traffic calming additions. The street is 40 miles an hour, but with wide-open views, a lack of trees, straight lanes, few street exits, it's not uncommon to see folks doing 50 mile an hour and on occasion 60-plus. I would be remiss to leave out the recent pedestrian deaths due to motorists less than 200 meters away. I understand that this zoning has little power over those conditions, but they will be building, if approved, amongst those conditions. So from a development standpoint, I recommend taking a serious look at what it takes to prepare for 40, 50, or God forbid, 60 mile an hour motorists being unprepared for a turnoff into a new convenience store. And to get deep into the weeds a little bit, westbound 21st Street entrance could get very complicated. People continuing west, just past Adams, are not going to be ready to go from 40-plus mile an hour to nearly stopped to allow people to make that right-hand turn north into the station. It might be expensive, but an additional private exit lane may be required for safety reasons, seeing as though 21st Street will not be slowed down anytime soon. Finally, please be aware, and I'm sure that you are, that you will be operating very near to residential, which is purposeful, and I appreciate that. But with that comes the need, especially with the 24/7 customers, to mind the light and the noise. These are working families and late-night gas stations, late-night gas station customers, which largely can't be controlled, and I understand that, should be reminded that people live and sleep nearby. So in conclusion, thank you for investing in our neighborhood, I wish you the best of luck with this development, be mindful of very fast traffic with few traffic calming implements currently employed, and keep the nearby residents in mind when it comes to lights and noise. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public who would like to speak on this one?
Hello, my name is Angela Bat, you've already read my, my, my statement. I would like to start off by saying I'm not opposed to improvement in our neighborhood. I would, I would like to, I would like you to keep in mind that I have lived at my address in some capacity since the early 1990s. I am concerned about several issues because I have seen neighbors go through several cha, I've seen the neighborhood go through several changes, including but not limited to the gas station, shopping center development at 15th and Adams, the townhomes at Adams, and the Dollar General store at 21st and Adams. These were major projects that I have been aware of but did not speak on. With that said, I would like to address the following concerns that have come because of my silence on the other projects. First, I would like to ask a few planning questions. Will the land be raised and will it have a drainage area? Many of, many of these ideas have already been on my mind, but I will address them in, I'm sorry, I'm very, very nervous. I will address them just to be sure everything is covered. The traffic at 21st and Adams, we see several individuals speeding on Adams. We also have had several accidents on 21st and Adams, which is a hotspot, but had, have had several deaths. I am speaking on the death of Emmett Leatherwood on November 20th, 2024. Emmett was hit, I'm sorry, Emmett was hit at 19th and Adams and placed at 20th and Adams. That tells me that the car was traveling at an, at an exaggerated speed because the driver did not stop until almost 21st and Adams. This is an accident that my son, who was three at the time, and I witnessed. We were both in the garage when we heard the impact at 19th and Adams and outside to see Emmett on the pavement. December 8th, 2024, Fernando Alvarez was hit by a vehicle and killed in the 2500 block of Adams. Say their names, Emmett Leatherwood, Fernando Alvarez. Remember their names, I haven't forgotten. December 20th, 2024, another vehicle versus the pedestrian. The pedestrian did survive the accident. March 17th, 2025, 21st and Adams, major accident with two vehicles. April 16th, 2025, motorcycle's, motorcycle accident in 19th and Adams. This is a representation of the accidents that have and will continue to take place on Adams. I get, I gave you a small view of the last eight months. Almost every day, we see an accident on Adams, and it is not reported to the media, but is an accident nonetheless. The reason I have told you this is because we need several things in our, our neighborhood to protect our community. This is a plea to the, to the city for resources that we need to sustain this project. A, we need a wider sidewalk on both sides of the street at minimum from 19th to 21st and Adams, because the, the plans show a bus stop that would need extra room to accommodate and to be ADA compliant. A crosswalk on or, on or between 19th and 20th and Adams. The community should have access points to either side of the street, that is a, that is safety for the community. A police president's community, or a community center in the station itself.
Ma'am, so we do have, I should have been more clear about this before you started, but we do have a four-minute time limit, so that way, folks who are here for later items, we can make sure that we get to them too. I will say, we did all get your full comments, and I, in my experience...
Mr. Chairman, can we give the speaker two more minutes to sum up?
Yeah. Any objection to that? All right, then we'll go ahead and give you two more minutes.
Okay. Damage to city property, I'll, I'll just kind of go ahead and skip ahead. Damage to city property, several neighbors, including myself, have lost mailboxes because Adams is basically a racetrack. Also, the city has lost signs as well in, in some of these incidents. One of my neighbors who was here tonight has lost at least a mailbox every six months in our neighborhood. Video surveillance would also be acceptable in the lack of a, a police station for 24, 24-hour speed checks. I was at our NIA meeting, and I did have a discussion with Jonathan about how our city isn't, isn't patrolled on that section of Adams. And I did have a conversation with an officer at that meeting, and he said that there is nobody that polices that section of Adams, which is a great disappointment. I would also request maybe fencing within 500 feet of the convenience store for several reasons. Lighting, because it will be a 24/7 gas station. I've cited incidents that have happened at the California 25th and Casey's, which is the closest community action that I could reference. They've had robberies, drugs in the parking lot, naked individuals running through the parking lot because they're, of course, doing drugs in the parking lot. So that pretty much sums up everything that I wanted to kind of bring up tonight.
All right. Are there any questions? All right, thank you very much. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this one? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Cow.
Somebody, screening between C2 uses and, and nearby residential uses, what, what do we have in the code? I'm, I'm drawing a blank.
The city zoning code includes landscape standards, and that includes screening. There are a couple of different options, but the typical one is a six-foot-high fence plus a six-foot-wide landscape strip with landscaping, the, with the effect that it provides a, pretty much of an opaque screen between the commercial and the adjacent residential.
What latitude does staff have in the site plan review to favor more of a security screening versus vegetation?
A security screening, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Fencing or wall?
I think that we have some discretion there. I, I think that it, you know, there's, it's a good question, honestly, because ultimately we have to fall on what the code allows. I'd say typically, though, if we say that a fence and landscaping is required, that's what we're going to get, is fence and landscaping. So I, I feel fairly confident that we can do that. Now, if the applicant wants to challenge that, they, I believe they would appeal it to the planning commission if it's a landscape issue.
Well, we could make it a condition to the rezoning.
Excuse me?
We could make it a condition to the rezoning.
I don't believe you can, because it's just, we're just asking for zoning, we would have to change it to a different type of zoning. It would be a PUD, a form of conditional zoning. I don't believe legally we can just throw on a condition to C2 zoning. That might be a question for legal counsel.
Do you take the same position with respect to ADA onsite or offsite traffic control measures?
Uh, yeah, I don't, yes, I don't believe that we can place a condition when the zoning is just C2 or any other zoning that's not a type of conditional zoning. It would have to be a planned unit development form of zoning.
It's not conditional zoning, but it's a condition, it's a rezoning subject to a condition.
I, I would have to defer to the city attorney on that. I, I've never seen us do that here. You know, if we, when we have, we always have a pre, well, I should say, we almost always have a pre-application meeting, we did in this case, and the question always comes up, do we need to place any conditions on zoning? Should it be planned unit development zoning with conditions, or should it be straight zoning? And of course, straight zoning, C2 in this case, is simpler for the applicant, and it's, there are a lot of good reasons to do straight zoning, but the decision was made in this case, or the direction or advice was that, yes, you could apply for this...
Like if during the site plan review process, staff took a position that some screening was a requirement, and the applicant opposed that, do they go to the BZA for that?
I would need to refer to this, but I believe they, if you can give me a few minutes, I can look it up. I think it possibly goes to the planning commission, but I can, I can look at that. It's into the planning commissioner board of zoning appeals, and different scenario, definitely, but the board of zoning appeals is going to look at it in a little different way than, than, because it would be an appeal.
Well, does staff feel that the concerns that have been raised by folks regarding the lighting and traffic issues, are those legitimate concerns?
So the lighting, we have a standard, I believe it's a limit to three-foot candles at the property line. Noise, we don't have, honestly, we don't have a lot of standards that control noise. There are, there is a noise ordinance, but it doesn't really apply to this type of land use. As far as landscaping, we have the discretion to require what we feel is appropriate. I don't know of any case where someone has pushed back on us telling them they need to have a fence with landscaping. If they don't have a fence with landscaping, they have to have enough, they have to have dense enough landscaping that provides an opaque screen, which is, that's a lot of landscaping. So, and, and I would say that most commercial developers would tend to want a fence, because they don't necessarily want people crossing through the backside of their property. So I think it's very realistic to say that they're going to have a, a fence with landscaping and a six-foot landscape setback to any parking. And... And I think where it's going to really affect most is on the north side. On the west side, the topography, I don't believe the applicant would want to even develop to the west side. And if there are any stormwater facilities in this case, like detention basins, they're going to tend to be on the northwest corner of the property.
That distance requirement, the proximity to the residential, is that a function of where the rezoning line is, or were there improvements on the property? As you said, if the, if there's a lot of open space to the west side, which fronts or backs onto residential properties, would they still be required to put a screening, landscaping, even if it's a 100-foot setback or more from any improvements?
Yes, they would. The only exception to that would be is if there's a bunch of natural trees that provide a thick screen, and that's like 20 feet wide. But the answer is yes, they're still required to provide some kind of screen. There are different, there are probably three different options in our landscape code. And again, one of those is a six-foot-high fence with landscaping.
Final question, Mr. Chairman, for now. What's been your success, staff's success in the site plan review process in getting the traffic engineer to agree to do a traffic study? And perhaps that could lead to controlled crosswalks? Not talking about sharing the cost of this with the developer, I'm talking about the city undertake it in whole or part, but crosswalks, signaled intersections, calming devices, things of that nature to address a pre-existing problem that it sounds like is going to be intensified if this is approved?
So, planning department really doesn't have any control over when a traffic study is required, or what the scope of that traffic study is, and what the final outcome is. It's very...
They go by the book, no exercise of discretion, is that...
I would say that's true. I think the only thing that we have control over, we have some influence over, is when a traffic study is required, is it required prior to the rezoning? Traffic studies typically required with any convenience store with gas pumps. And there's not a lot that has to be said to compel the engineering division to really take a cautious look at the traffic. There might be some of the things that were mentioned today that they don't have a lot of control over. I don't know if they have any control over what the speed limit is on Adams, for example.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
The motion is to approve.
The motion is to approve. And we're ready for roll.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Nay.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Haron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then we will move on to what is now Action Item D, the 30th and Topeka Project.
All right, thank you. So, tonight before you, Amanda has placed a memorandum and then a resolution as well, and then I'll run through a quick presentation, just highlighting what we're talking about, because this is something we don't do all the time. So, as a reminder, it's the planning commission's responsibility that when the city of Topeka receives outreach or is engaged about a creation of a new TIF district, to ensure that the project that's being proposed for that district is consistent with our land use and growth management plan. So, we received an application for the creation of a TIF district by BDC, 30th and Topeka LLC. So this project is located at 2950 Southwest Topeka Boulevard, and the district is outlined in yellow, and the screen's in front of you. So, as you can see, the existing zoning on the site is C4. C4 commercial use, which is consistent with the existing zoning in that there's no proposed change. The project is still to be slightly determined on what all of the use will be, but all commercial, potentially some quick service, potentially some retail, but all fitting well within the commercial C4 zoning. All right, so what we'd be looking for is a recommendation that in accordance with the state statute, that planning commission makes the determination that this is consistent with our land use and growth management plans, and then it will go forth to city council for a public hearing where they can take consideration and adoption of a TIF district. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cow.
I will shut up after a while, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Rhiannon, I want to be clear on a pretty important point to me.
Sure.
I certainly don't have any issue with the land use issue there, that it's consistent with the plan. Okay, that's not an issue. My concern is whether or not action by the planning commission could be interpreted as being some endorsement or approval of the funding through tax increment financing for this project.
Yes.
Because the resolution is a little vague on that point.
Yeah, so to clarify, in the resolution, what you're doing is ensuring that the proposed use is consistent with the land use and growth management plan. Then council will actually hold two public hearings for this. We'll hold a public hearing to create the district, and then a whole public hearing where we go through the financial analysis, put together a development agreement.
No, I understand that, that we don't get to approve, but I didn't want this, if we pass the motion, I didn't want it come up later in front of the governing body as being that the planning commission considered the TIF financing.
Correct, yeah. So, maybe this helps with that, the process, the way that our policy is written out, if they, if you all didn't approve this, we would never take the TIF to the governing body, because the planning commission found it to be inconsistent with our land use plan. So, them getting it in there, and that, they know that you've reviewed it and checked it for consistency.
Does it create mayhem if there's a change to the resolution, or is that boilerplate?
This is what we have, this is what we have used. Can I ask what your...
From the city attorney's office?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I know it's, it might sound like a small matter, but we're talking about the approval of the project plan. The project plan, 45ths of it relates to the funding by, under the tax increment financing statute. And that's not what we're set up to do. And I think everybody in the room here understands that, I just don't know how that, how favorable action is going to be interpreted on down the line. And I have a suggestion for changing the resolution, if you can, without, again, suffering severe consequences.
So I think I...
Or even if it does cause severe consequences.
I don't think there's severe consequences, but I do think I see the issue with this. The issue is that somebody can create a district without a plan, and so without knowing what their plan is, we wouldn't know if the use was consistent. So before we can come to you, we have to have both...
With one sentence saying, "The planning commission makes no recommendation as to whether TIF financing should be approved for this project," is that a significant change that caused you any heartburn?
Mr. Wood.
Is that stating what we're doing, right?
Yeah, I don't see an issue if you want to add something in the resolution.
We could state it in the motion, perhaps, is that...
I just, I have seen this problem, not in Topeka, but I've seen it arise before, okay? The language would be, "The planning commission at the tail end of the resolution," somewhere appropriate there, "the planning commission makes no recommendation as to whether tax increment financing, tax increment financing should be approved for this project." And say, "No, up or down, it's just, we're not engaged in that, it's not our business. We're looking only at the land use piece of it." Dan, give me a nod.
Has this issue ever come up before?
I've only done two of these since I've been here, so this is the first for me, but, you know, I want everybody to be careful. I do know that, I believe that legal and everybody understands what the planning commission's role is in reviewing this, but I want everybody to be careful.
Matt, I'm sorry to hit you with that cold, we could have talked to you about it ahead of time, but it's just, again, it's just saying, we're not taking a position on the governing body's use of TIF funding, even though that's part and parcel of the project plan that we are endorsing. That's all I'm saying.
I got to, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, the resolution is just taking up the, finding that we're consistent with that land use management plan, and it doesn't mention anywhere TIF, so I think, I see the resolution good as is, but if the commission wants to add something in there, we can take that up.
Can you clarify how our motion would be stated without having anything?
No good deed goes unpunished.
Just move approval of the resolution, or what's the recommendation?
Yeah, so it would be that, yes, Resolution Number 1, 2025, in accordance with state statute, is found to be consistent, the project plan is consistent with the land use growth management plan.
So that's all we're doing?
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't see that we're approving anything to do with tax, it's TIF, it's just that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Any other questions for staff?
Could read back the language one more time, please?
Sure, yes, so it is that, yeah, found by the commission, so you're making a motion that in accordance with the state statute, the commission finds the project plan is consistent with the land use growth management plan 2040.
And just to clarify, because it got confusing for just one second here, I just want to make sure I understand, the reason why you're saying it's consistent is because it's currently zoned as C4, and we're recommending that it stay, and it is staying at C4, even though we really don't know what's going in there, except vaguely, maybe a restaurant or something?
Yeah, the use is going to be consistent with the existing zoning, C4 commercial.
Okay.
Does this one include an applicant in public comment, or no?
No, there'll be a public hearing at the governing body when it goes before them on July 15th.
All right, got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, any other discussion or any motions from the commission?
I guess I'm wondering why a resolution is even necessary if we're not changing anything.
Yeah, so the way that the city's TIF policy reads today, it relates back to the state statute, and that requires that a planning commission find consistency with land use for the creation of a new TIF district. So I think the thought process is, is that a planning commission would oversee the potential use of a district's creation to agree that that's consistent before it even goes forth to the governing body for approval of an actual plan and potentially a development agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
You may have to help me, but I will move to approve per the state statute that this is in line with our land use and growth management plan.
I would second that.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Brooks, a second by Commissioner Nelson. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Haron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next, we move on to discussion items. Our first discussion item is Discussion Item B, which is the potential changes in our districts. Is this something that I'll be handing over to the special committee or to city staff, or...
Staff is prepared to make a presentation.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
That the committee is certainly welcome to speak at the end or in the beginning, either way. So, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and start.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we received a lot of comment about this item. I think I counted 18 to 20 different comments, and most of those, by far, are opposed to allowing duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes in residential neighborhoods. And I believe that these comments are primarily from residents of central Topeka neighborhoods. Potlin was mentioned a few times, College Hill was mentioned at least a few times. We met with College Hill early in the discussion of this. I know it was really, it was right after we had that big snowstorm, because it was cold outside, there was a lot of snow, but, and they made their feelings known at that time as well. So out of these comments, I would say there are probably three of them that said that they're open to this on a case-by-case basis. You can interpret that different ways, but to me, that suggests by conditional use permit. There are two, I think, two, three, that support the idea. And I just wanted, I wanted to make that known, because I didn't want to give that short shrift, and I was afraid I would not mention it at the end of the presentation. So that's why I'm mentioning it now, not to emphasize it too much. So, with that, I'll go through this, and some of this, you've seen this before, but a lot of the people in the audience might not have seen these, so that's one reason why these slides are on here. So, we've been working with a committee, a subset of the planning commission, for several months now on a variety of things, and the committee has chosen, after considering a lot of information and talking to a lot of stakeholders, proposing changes to the zoning regulations to allow duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in our districts, our residential districts. So just to be clear, the single-family residential districts are R1 and R2, and duplexes are permitted by right in M1 and M2. So what is proposed this time by the committee is that duplexes be permitted by building permit, subject to special standards, and that triplexes, quadplexes be permitted by conditional use permit. Currently, if anyone wants to do that in an R1 or R2 district, they would have to rezone the property, which creates a lot of problems. It's not insurmountable, but it creates a lot of problems and probably some not-great consequences. So I will say also that the special committee on housing is also exploring more flexibility for multifamily residential use in C and D districts, that's the commercial districts and the downtown districts. It's allowed, but there are some restrictions, some standards that make it difficult. Also considering updating regulations regarding manufactured and modular housing. So, our regulations on manufactured housing are derived a lot from state statute, and they haven't really been updated in a really long time. And then also changes to parking standards for residential use, mainly to decrease the parking standards to some extent. Why is the committee thinking about this? Why is this supported with the planning commission? The city council, the governing body, adopted the citywide housing market study in 2020, and it recognizes the need for affordable housing and missing middle housing. The missing middle includes accessory dwellings, duplexes, and small apartment buildings. The key findings of the study is that Topeka is projected to need 4,000 additional units of affordable housing over the next 20 years, and 3,650 units of workforce housing needed over the next 20 years. Affordable housing, I would say that the type of housing we're talking about here is probably going to be more like workforce housing and less like affordable housing. It's not likely to be sub... It's not likely to be subsidized. You're not going to see a single duplex on lot being subsidized with tax credits, for example, not likely, anyway. So an important finding, this came out of the housing study, I believe, is that of all the residential zoning in the city, 70, not 76, 87% of that is restricted to single-family residential land use. So keep that in mind, if someone wants to develop a duplex, for example, on any one of those lots, they have to rezone the property. Allowing duplexes in single-family residential districts helps to address a housing need. It's an incremental approach with relatively low impact, and also provides an owner occupant an additional revenue source to maintain an existing residence. So one of the things we tend to do when we're making or suggesting or discussing a substantial change to our code is to look at what's happening in other cities, and people have asked us, asked this question in the past. So Lawrence recently adopted a new zoning code that allows duplexes by right in some single-family residential districts. South Bend, Indiana, they allow it by right in some single-family districts, allowed by conditional use permit in others. Durham, North Carolina, and Boise, Idaho, allowed by right, subject to standards. In Boise, it's been allowed by right, subject to standards, since at least the 1990s. Burlington, Vermont, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes are allowed by right in the single-family districts. Montana, a pretty bold step on the part of the legislature, they passed a state law that requires cities of 5,000 population or more to allow duplexes by right in all single-family districts without any additional standards. And they also adopted some regulations that preempt cities from requiring too much parking. So there's been some stakeholder engagement about this issue. We, the committee, with staff's helps, made presentations to individual neighborhoods and also the Citizens Advisory Council. Two of those neighborhoods, I would say, were pretty supportive of this idea. They welcome residential development in their neighborhoods. They have a number of vacant lots, they see a housing need, and they welcome it. The city also conducted a survey of neighborhood residents and others. We had a pretty good response to that survey, I think it was 405 responses, and there was discussion with housing developers. The committee met with individual housing developers. And there's also been Planning Commission discussion, this has been on the agenda a couple of times. So the survey results, most of the responses were from central Topeka residents. A lot of those, well, central Topeka, I can't remember the zip codes off the top of my head, but definitely from central Topeka. 61% of respondents say that duplexes should be allowed in single-family districts, either by right with no special standards, by right with special standards, or by conditional use permit. 53% of those respondents say that triplexes and quadplexes should be allowed in single-family districts, either by right with no special standards, by right with special standards, or by conditional use permit. The primary concerns that people have about duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes are parking, potential changes in property values, a change to the character of the neighborhood, and a large concern that came out of this is conversion of existing single-family homes. Keep in mind that a lot of this, not a lot of the central Topeka neighborhoods, but at least a few central Topeka neighborhoods, they don't have very many vacant lots, so if they're going to get duplexes, chances are it's going to be a conversion of an existing single-family home. One thing I should point out is neighborhood character means different things to different people, and so it's not clear what is meant by changes in neighborhood character. To some people, that's a physical change, some people, it's a change in, in the residents that live there. So in putting this together, discussing with stakeholders, discussing with the committee, we have a list of possible standards: minimum lot size, architectural compatibility, building height and overall size, limit number and size of driveways per street frontage, limit the parking area, require windows to avoid blink facades, have visible entrance, entrances, have modulated articulated facades, parking in driveways should be from alleys when possible. If the duplex is on a corner lot, the entrance to each unit should be on separate streets, and limit the concentration of duplexes. Okay, so I'll have some photos, just to give you an idea of some existing duplexes. Start with the ones that are probably less attractive, and go to the ones that are a little bit more attractive. This is really about what these look like, probably more than whether they should be allowed at all. It's really, so these, these slides don't address the question of whether they should be allowed, it's really kind of what the basis for some of the draft standards are. I'm just going to go through a few of these. So what's notable about these is the driveways, excessive driveways. On this one, it's hard to see where the entrances are. So this is an example of one in a neighborhood where the access, the vehicular access is off the alley, and the, you can only see, well, that's not necessarily true, but the entrances, you don't see two entrances on the facade of each of the duplexes. One entrance is in the back, and one's, the entrance is on the facade, there's a porch. So this is one that was recently built in, at 12th and Lakeside. Okay, so now to the draft standards. So these are attached to the, to the report, they're in your packet. They address these issues. So one thing I should point out is we really looked at potential to regulate a lot of different things, and the feeling was, I believe, is that would be counterproductive. Make it so difficult that it, it just would be too difficult to even build a duplex, and some of those standards are probably unnecessary. So it really comes down to this, requiring a minimum lot width of 37 feet. So 37 feet, a lot of lots in older neighborhoods are 37 and a half feet. When I say lots, I mean the, the building lots or the parcels that houses are on are about 37 and a half feet, it's pretty common. Driveway access, maximum driveway width, so limiting the size of the driveway and maybe the number of driveway, driveways, excuse me. Requiring trees along street frontages. Architectural design standards, and providing the conditional use permit as an option if some standards are not met. Again, this applies to duplexes, this does not apply to triplexes or quadplexes, with the understanding that those would require a conditional use permit. And so I think it'd be a good idea, just to give you a little time, just a minute or two at least, to look at what's in the packet at these standards, if you haven't already, but I would encourage you at least to just look this over, and then I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have, and, and suggestions. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, just two things real quick. What is, it's at the tail end of this, of the materials that Mike just went over, and that is the issue of conversions, and that does seem to be a sticking point with a lot of folks. And what I'd like to do is take a look at what other cities and other states have done to see if there's some clever way to, to satisfy all parties and see if, if conversions can still be done upright, but in a way that assuages the, the concerns of, of a lot of folks. I would like also, on the list that you have of cities, there are dozens, maybe hundreds of cities in California that are over a certain size that are subject to a state law mandate prohibiting exclusive single-family dwellings. Same thing in Maryland, they have a statewide prohibition that I think is a function of the size of the community, and Colorado is currently reworking its, a governor's plan to, to mandate the elimination of exclusive single-family zoning in at least certain-sized cities. So it's, it's more than a handful of communities across the country, it's, it's many, many hundreds.
Minneapolis has done that.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, Minneapolis is, is sort of the poster child for it, yeah.
Mike, we won't be voting on this today, we'll be...
Thank you. This is for discussion tonight, and there are some people here that I believe are here for this, for this item.
Before we get to that, anything else from Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
Yep, so just a few things. I liked how you had different cities that have done different things, that was helpful. Do we have any data that tells us, you know, they took this action, and then this was the result of that action? Do we have anything that tells us, was it successful in getting more units brought into the community, or was there some unintended consequence that they learned along the way?
We haven't found anything like that, I don't know if it's out there. We did some looking, we haven't, we probably haven't looked, turned, you know, turned over every rock, but, so it's not...
Be interesting to call, like Boise, and just say, hey, how did that work out for you, but...
Yeah.
So the next question, in your examples, you mentioned that some single-family districts were allowed, like in Lawrence was one, I don't remember the other one, but I'm curious of how that works, if, or what, can you describe how only some and not all single-family districts?
So in Lawrence, Lawrence has, I think, probably four, five different single-family districts. You know, they, they require different minimum lot sizes, so my recollection is the denser single-family residential districts allow it, the larger lot size do not, but I'm not sure of that. This is fairly new, they just adopted this in April. I don't know how much they studied it before they adopted it, but it's too soon to know how that's turning out.
Okay, and then you made a comment about that we may want to limit the concentration of duplexes. How, how would that work? Is that, and I know maybe it's not solidified in, yet, but does that mean you're only two on a block, or you can't have more than three in a row, or what does that mean?
I think there are different ways of doing that. You could say no more than two on a, on a, on a block, you could say no more than one, or, or maybe require a separation. I can tell you that's really awkward, when you require the separation requirement, we do that with short-term rentals. It's awkward. Yeah, so I, I think there are various ways of doing it.
Okay, and then last, on the conversions, and I know I mentioned this to you, in maybe a month or two ago, we had someone come and do a comment, and I thought it was interesting how he mentioned a lot of the homes, you know, larger homes in Topeka, they already have renters on a different floor or whatever, and basically it functions like a duplex or a triplex, or a quadplex even. And I think I asked, would that, would, would doing this affect what's currently being, how it's current, how homes are currently being used? And then two is, by allowing conversions, does that complicate their, their rental business in the future, or does it change anything? Maybe help us understand that.
So I don't know if this answered your question, but in central Topeka neighborhoods, there are houses that were converted to duplexes or even triplexes decades ago, and those are legal non-conforming uses. They were legal when they were done. I can't tell you if they all got building permits and comply with building code, but as far as zoning, they're legal non-conforming uses. The other thing that's happening is there could be multiple unrelated people living in a house, and the city code allows up to five unrelated individuals to live in a single, single dwelling. A dwelling is not defined by, so much by how many people live there, it's defined by whether the household can function independently of the other household. For example, if you have a, if you have a situation where there's a separate entrance, separate kitchen, it's walled off from the other one, that's a dwelling. You can function, it can function independently of the other.
Thanks. Any other questions from Commissioners?
I just have one quick one. If you, if the convert, if you require a CUP for a conversion, what do you anticipate the additional standards would be needed for a CUP review? Would you be adding more standards to it, or would it just have to go through a separate process, but still basically the same things, you're still looking for the same items, as if it was by the other way?
In my opinion, if you were going to have something that's allowed by CUP, it wouldn't be standards, it'd be guidelines, because a CUP is, it's a case-by-case basis, anyway. One of the difficulties of standards is someone has to meet those as standards, and, and there's really no wavering from that. If something's on a case-by-case basis, it's approved by CUP, it makes probably more sense to have guidelines. Doesn't mean you couldn't have standards that apply also, but, you know, a conditional use permit, just so everybody knows, the process is pretty much the same as rezoning. The analysis that goes into it is pretty much the same as rezoning. The key difference is you're not amending the map, and it's a conditional use permit. You can approve something with conditions, and so it's much more, you can right-size it for the situation, whereas if it's rezoning, you can't really do that.
Thank you.
In most cases.
Commissioner Brooks?
One last question, and I'm trying to ask questions that I'm hoping is instructional to everyone here. Kind of reading through the comments, there's a lot of Potlin, a lot of College Hill, and these are historic neighborhoods. And so from that perspective, is there any limitations on if we allow duplex, if we allow duplex to be built in Potlin, let's say, historic neighborhood? Would they have to build that duplex to meet the standards of that historic district? Or can it look like the pictures that you showed on the screen?
So there is a, one of the draft standards states specifically that duplexes in historic districts or conservation districts may be required to be built to comply with the standards for that historic district. They go through a process called Certified Local Government Review. So Certified Local Government Review, it's historic review, if you want to call it that, historic preservation, it's really about the physical changes to the structure or the site. It's not really a land use question. Now, the land use can affect the physical structure of the building. For example, you convert something to a duplex, you're talking about a separate entrance. So that separate entrance is going to have a physical change to that building, and that would be under review for a certified local government review. You got driveways, that could affect it as well, so it's really about the physical changes. As far as the duplexes that are shown in some of those photos, I can't tell you just with all certainty that you can't have something like that in a historic district. It's difficult, but historic preservation's pretty complicated. It's not necessarily you have to build something that looks like a Victorian home, or you have to look, build something that looks like a Queen Anne, it just can't detract from the district. And in some cases, they, they don't want you to build something like, that looks just like what's in the district, because that's kind of a false sense of history, and so...
Mike, would you be correct to say that those standards are going to apply, I mean, as drafted here? The standards would apply regardless of whether the duplex was upright or conditional use permit?
Correct.
I mean, it's, applies both, yeah.
Yeah, any physical changes to a building is going to be subject to certified local government review. Government Review.
Anything else from Commissioners?
I think, is there any way we can do this without just making it blanket across all single-family districts?
So...
I'm just talking too quietly, sorry. I'm just asking, if there's any way this can be done without making it a blanket rule across all single-family districts?
I think that's difficult, because most of the single-family residential zoning in Topeka is R1. There is some, the R2 zoning tends to be in those neighborhoods that were developed, oh, I don't know, prior to the 1940s, prior to 1930s. They're on the smaller lots. So, you know, a lot of the opportunity for this is in areas zoned R1. Could you not, could you allow it in R1 and not allow it in R2? To me, that's kind of somewhat illogical, because R2 is kind of a denser zoning district. So I think, you know, we did think about that. I think it's difficult in this case. You know, maybe if we had four or five different single-family residential districts, it'd be easier, but we don't. And that's probably a good thing, too. So, simple answer is it would be difficult to do that, I think. Unless you did overlay zoning. But I almost hate to even bring that up.
What's that?
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, then I believe we are good to move on to whether there is anyone here in the public who would like to comment on this. Trying to be more clear than I was earlier, there is a four-minute time limit. There will be a yellow light and one buzzer that goes off to signal that you have one minute left. And then the red light will go off whenever your time is up.
Good evening. My name's Bruce Emmert, and I live at 1625 Southwest Jewel Avenue. That's College Hill. There's quite a few College Hill folks here tonight. We feel fairly strongly about this. This is my home. I graduated junior high, high school, College Hill. My family did. We've had people in this city for a hundred and some years. You know, for most of my life, however, we, my wife and I have lived outside in my ministry, lived in suburbs that were just identical copies of one another, no matter where you live. Overland Park, Omaha, they're all the same. And when I retired from full-time ministry and we moved back home, we wanted to live in a neighborhood, a real neighborhood, that felt like a neighborhood, not a suburban area, where people could talk to each other, things like that. We wanted to live in a neighborhood. And College Hill is one of those places. My in-laws lived in Potlin for 46 years. My kids live next door to Randolph Elementary School. These are the sort of neighborhoods that we want to live in. In 2018, College Hill was recognized as one of the four best neighborhoods in the state of Kansas. And here's why. This is from a magazine, it's the Leadership Center of Kansas. Recognized as one of the four best neighborhoods, noted because of its preservation, being a longstanding tradition and passion for the people who live here. Fighting for residential zoning that we have now. Residents of our community rallied when the former Boswell Junior High School plot, the idea was to put in slab housing there. And our community kept it out, because it didn't feel like it would fit the neighborhood. We work hard in our neighborhood to keep it a nice neighborhood. We worked together to clean our neighborhood, to try to make it safe. We work with the city in planning to make our streets safe to cross. What we're discussing, it feels like, is, well, allowing duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes in these historic neighborhoods like ours, in Elmhurst and Potlin, would undermine the neighborhood's atmosphere that we cherish. A simple walkthrough neighborhood like ours reveals that houses that were the result of the developments that you were referring to earlier, you can spot those a mile away, because they're not taken care of. There's an apartment complex in our neighborhood where the balcony that people can sit in is propped up on cinder blocks. Where's the city? To make sure there's some kind of compliance for safety standards. It's easy to tell which of these houses this has already been done to. Now, there's also the possibility to develop or purchase a property and destroy it, and then do something else with it. You know, our neighborhood was in favor of the, we thought that was fine, that we could have these accessory dwelling units, because at least somebody who lived there would still live there and rent out of space. That was okay, because there's pride of ownership there. But what we're really talking about are non-resident developers coming in and destroying our neighborhoods. Now, we've already talked about in the city that there's what, 477 new affordable housing units being developed by the city. We already heard tonight about a plan on the north part of town to put in these sort of things. Even on the one that was talking about the, about the gas station, land that hasn't been developed yet for more duplexes. So why change this? Why go into a historic neighborhood and destroy it? Because that's what would happen. All you have to do is look around the neighborhoods where this is rampant. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you tonight.
And then just so you and further speakers know, we do also have a chance, they may not have any questions, but in case Commissioners do have questions with the speakers. So with that in mind, any questions?
Thank you.
I'm Sue Fackler. I live at 1600 Boswell in College Hill. And I grew up in Colorado. Forty-eight years ago, my husband, we had been unemployed for a while. We were living in my mother's basement with no job and a baby. And my husband came downstairs, and he said, he's working with the house hunter, and he said, "Get the atlas out. Where the hell is Topeka, Kansas?" And we've been here 48 years. It turned out to be the best decision we ever made, because we found our first house in College Hill. We didn't know we liked old houses. We didn't know that we wanted that neighborhood feel, but we instantly did. Turned out, I lived next door to Joan Wagner, with the second move within College Hill. I can't understand why a city would shoot themselves in the foot by destroying an atmosphere with a neighborhood where you're building a sense of community. We're adjacent, we're across the street from Washburn University. That's our playground. I walk there every morning. I get up at 5:20, and I walk the two miles around the perimeter. My husband does. We took our grandkids there this, the last week when they were visiting. I mean, we have so many wonderful things going on in College Hill and Potlin. Why would you diminish a neighborhood like that that's working for College Hill, I mean, for Topeka? Our friends in Denver still say, "What are you doing in Topeka, Kansas?" And we finally, just last year, we bought cemetery plots. I finally gave up on the idea that I'm a Colorado girl. We've been here 45 years, what's it going to take? We have such good friends. We got involved at Westminster Presbyterian. Our kids went to Randolph and Robinson Middle School and Topeka High. We've built traditions. We have lifelong friends because we grew up in a neighborhood like Bruce just mentioned. Our Neighborhood Association meeting is going on right now down at the church, and there's probably 20 people there. And we're all there and have been involved in it for years. We worked so hard to get Boswell Park developed. We fought the Oxford House situation, when they put one, not only one, but three on one street in college. And we said, "We agree, every neighborhood should have an Oxford House, but three in one block is not fair." Because how, what's that going to do to the property value of the houses on that block? So we fought that. We did the downzoning specifically so that we could save the integrity of these homes. One of our best homes, three houses down, is a beautiful colonial. And the people that bought it were moving. And I said, "Oh, have you got a new family coming in?" She said, "No, I'm sorry, we're going to rent to seven football players." And so now, nobody's doing the lawn, nobody, there's trash around, and they are not invested in the neighborhood in any way. And that doesn't help Topeka. Don't you want to build longevity? We've stayed here this long. Our three kids are still in Kansas. They're all educated, went to KUK State, and stayed here because of the Midwest mentality. But you're not going to have that if you destroy neighborhoods. And that's what's going to happen if you change the zoning. So, I really hope that you will make good decisions for Topeka. And I'll continue to brag on Topeka if we make decisions about what is good for the people who live here. Thank you.
Wait, any questions? Nope. Well, it looks like we don't have any. Looks like we don't have any for you.
You don't.
No, thank you.
Susan Duffy, 1501 Southwest Boswell. My house was built as a model home in the '04 World's Fair. Francis Longacre came back and built it. He did try to set it on fire after he built it, because he was in foreclosure. But it was a hospital during the flu epidemic. Thirty patients from Washburn, all men, three nurses, one doctor, two fraternities. The, during World War II, the principal of Topeka High and his wife lived there for a year, running out of room, as everybody did during that time. I have now lived, had the pleasure of living in that home for 40 years. We are working to put it on the historic college, or historic homes for the state of Kansas. This is what I do know in my neighborhood. An Airbnb went in three doors down. Five bedrooms, five separate people, share three bathrooms. The parking is packed on the street. It's not a good situation. A rental across from me was a triplex. It caught on fire, burned down. We bought the property. It's been a garden, it's been a soccer field, it's been everything you can imagine, and now it is a community garden, again. It's a good use of a vacant plot. The four-plex that was mentioned earlier, that's also catty-corner from me. I bet you I've called the police 30-plus times. Gunshots, stabbings, altercations, physical abuse, you name it, it's happened in that four-plex. And it's a pit. And right now, she's right. It's falling, the whole front is falling off. Again, we know how well City of Topeka deals with their wonderful landlords. And I've got to say that you can go down the street and know rental, rental, Airbnb, because that is what has happened. Our neighborhood is precious to us. 1990, we did establish that park, and we traded property with USD 501. We got the old high, junior high school property. Bishop Elementary was part of the trade, some land the city had, the district wanted. I invite you to come to our College Hill Fourth of July Parade. I invite you to come to our chili feed. I invite you to come caroling with us. I invite you to come to our night out. This is the type of neighborhood we have. And I am sorry, based on 40 years of history, I do not believe letting landlords continue to split up property in one of the most beautiful neighborhoods is going to be beneficial to the property taxes that are collected from folks who live in that neighborhood. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Any questions?
My name is Donna Nordstrom. I live at 1625 Southwest McVicker. And since we're giving histories, I'm a fourth-generation Topekan. My maiden name is Debacker. My forebears were produce farmers on the Lower Road. And almost everyone in Topeka, in fact, many folks around the country, know about the historic house at 1625 McVicker. It is my downsized retirement home. It's my second home I've owned in College Hill. I bought my first home in College Hill in 1979. The house is pink. My husband prefers to call it salmon. He has a problem with living in a pink house. It's a Tudor Revival Storybook Cottage, and it's proudly on the National Register of Historic Homes. Untold pictures have been taken by passersby's. Nicknames galore. Hansel and Gretel, Mushroom House, Cottage House, Gingerbread House. It's historically known as the Cowan's House, designed by a famous architect, built in 1922 by two world-famous female singers as a wedding gift for their brother. The father of the siblings was the superintendent of the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe. Okay, let's say I decided to duplex this house. Add a bunch of exterior doors, remove the delicate shingle roof that mimics thatch, or maybe I'm just feeling disgusted with its oldness and patina. And I tear it down and build a box. I would be run out of town, probably worse. Yet this is exactly what the city will encourage for the historic homes in the College Hill area known as Campus Front, a largely owner-occupied area. This land was donated by John Ritchie. The Washburn University President, Peter McVicker, wanted a robust neighborhood adjacent to campus. The neighborhood survived, but not without the steadfastness of our forebears. Haven't enough neighborhoods been destroyed in downtown and central Topeka? That we now need to start purposefully destroying midtown? With absentee landlords, very poor code compliance, and poor infrastructure? The alleys, let me give you a tour. They are disgusting. Because of market forces, the College Hill investor will cater to students. Not what President McVicker envisioned, and certainly not housing for working, contributing family units. We must save our maintained historic neighborhoods. I stand against this upzoning change. Thank you for your time.
I'm Duane Palmeroy, City Councilman for 12 years and Acting Mayor for 81 days. Back in 1992, I was living in 1100 Block of Fillmore. I now live in College Hill in the family home where I grew up. But in that 1100 Block of Fillmore, our side of the street, every house was single-family, owner-occupied. One house went up for sale, and I was concerned that it might get divided up like some of the houses across the street. So I began investigating, and back then, there wasn't a map for zoning. So at the Planning Commission office, had to go in and get these plates, these big plates, and for our neighborhood, there were like four of them. These separate, big, huge plates to look at what the zoning actually was. And what I found out was that because, probably, when we were first were sitting for a long time, there was no zoning. And then when they went to zoning, all the city commissioners lived on the west side of town. The only single-family zoning was on the west side of town. Oakland, which was almost all, you know, working class, lower-priced housing, but owner-occupied, single-family, there was no single-family zoning. There was no single-family zoning in Oakland. So, I get elected to the city council in 1993. I begin the process of trying to convince the planning staff and my colleagues that we needed to get some downzoning going. It was a long process that lasted over a decade. Finally got a big boost in 1998 when Susan Duffy's husband Clark Duffy joined me on the council and became a really strong advocate. And then other council members became strong advocates for their neighborhoods. Instead of downzoning, actually, the more accurate description was reflective zoning. We wanted it zoned to reflect what was there and protect what was there and not further encroachment of the multifamily. And like I say, it was a long process. But these neighborhoods developed their plan. I thought, you know, Oakland, just make it single-family zoning, and then anything that's not complying would be grandfathered or grandparented in. But I, you know, had to stay on the council long enough to see that through. And then, just several months ago, but not less than two years ago, we have people advocating for the accessory dwelling units. And my concern on that wasn't that concept, but is this going to be the beginning of even more? And I was assured, no, this isn't the camel nose in the head. But it certainly is getting to be more and more of that camel in the tent.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everybody on the council. I just want to thank you for your time and effort that you put into this because you care so much about the City of Topeka. I can tell you that I didn't want to move to Topeka because I lived on a farm, and I loved my farm. But because of a divorce, I had to find a new dwelling. I had to find a new home. And as I looked around Topeka, I found it hard to find a beautiful home in a really nice neighborhood. Wide sidewalks, trees, old standing trees. And neighbors that were close enough together with front porches that they got to know each other. I think all of this started because of affordable homes. We wanted to have affordable homes for everyone to have a place to stay in Topeka. Well, as I was looking as now a single woman and a schoolteacher on top of that, as you know, we paid the big bucks, I had to buy my own home. And to find this home that I could afford was in College Hill. It's already affordable homes. Young families are starting to move into our area with children because this is the home they can afford. They can't afford a home on the east side of Topeka by Lake Shawnee. They can't afford a home on the west side of Topeka where they're building these brand-new homes. But in my neighborhood, it's affordable homes for young families to get started. And as you know, because many of you, part of you were in a generation, you built your equity by owning a home. You can still do that in the College Hill. You can afford those homes. So if you're talking about affordable housing, keep the areas where it is affordable. Affordable for new families to move in, to build in our neighborhood a new community coming up as a new generation. Please don't take away our area. I think you all know where the box is. The box is where there's so much crime, and it's right across east of our neighborhood. We've kept that box out of our neighborhood the best we can. But if you turn us into those beautiful old homes that have been made into four-plexes, duplexes, some of them probably ten-plexes because there's ten rooms in the house, the crime has gone up. It's, the police call that the box. If you start allowing our homes to be divided up like that and five mailboxes on the outside of the homes because they're three stories, you're going to have a rectangle in your city where the police have to arrive. Thank you. Thank you again for your time.
Ma'am, I don't believe, did she give her, your name for?
Sue Bowley, 1334 Southwest Plasse.
All right, and then any questions?
Thank you all.
Hello again. Jonathan Smith, 2526 Southeast Colorado. The City of Topeka desperately needs to get away from restrictive, single-family zoning. Our city is being suffocated by its abundance of single-family zoning areas, and we need a rapid influx of dense housing and multifamily housing developments are a part of that solution. Ideally, these multifamily developments would be for sale, to be owned, rather than rented. But any additional housing units are helpful in the short term. It's easy to say, "Don't change my neighborhood" because you got your house. Some of your parents lived in your neighborhood. Some of their parents owned their house in that neighborhood. Entry-level homes, meaning the house probably needs about $20,000 to $30,000 worth of renovations, are $150,000 to $250,000. Sure, you can go cheaper, but I hope your finances are liquid because you're likely going to see far more upfront surprise costs. I'm not disagreeing with a lot of you here. Large influxes of rental units administered by out-of-town landlords kill neighborhoods. I know, I live in a rental with an out-of-town, well, with an absentee landlord amongst other rental homes that are also rented next to other rental homes. Folks do not talk to each other, so I get it, I understand. But we need more housing. Thousands of more housing units in Topeka is what is required. I'm sure most of you follow the news. The federal government operates at a financial deficit every single year with no end in sight, ever deepening our national debt. Topeka is exactly the same with housing. Every year, we are building less housing than we need, and every year, we fall further behind in housing unit debt. Tope, oh, my apologies. But we must stay cognizant that the more a neighborhood is filled out with rental properties, the less that community is allowed to thrive as it places a ceiling on community cohesion as individual tenants come and go, never allowing the feeling of connectedness in the surrounding community of neighbors to take hold, which can metaphorically lead a neighborhood to die. I support this measure, but only if it creates limits on the amount of rental units allowed to be injected into owned-home neighborhoods. But do keep developing more dense housing initiatives, but maintain a priority toward owned housing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Preischer. I live at 1327 Southwest College Avenue. My wife and I moved here twenty-two years ago. We never thought we would be life, living in Topeka for two decades, but here we are, living in one of the historic homes in College Hill. A lot of great comments brought up by my fellow College Hill, my neighbors. And I'd like to speak to something as a homeowner for twenty years, someone who has done renovations and upgrades to their home, and as a practicing engineer in the state of Kansas. Many of these homes, to speak specifically to the conversion of these older, large homes into multifamily units, into duplexes and potentially a triplex or a quadplex. Many of these homes have knob-and-tube wiring still. They have very small electrical services. So you are going to be forced to chop the, basically to split all your circuits in your house. You're going to have to put in new electrical services. In order to run a lot of this wiring, you're going to have to open up walls, thereby destroying lath and plaster finishes or run it on the outside of the homes, stapling Romex or conduit to the outside of the home, thereby affecting that aesthetic and the safety of the house. Are you going to have abandoned receptacles on multiple levels? These, many of these houses still have clay sanitary lines running out to the central sewer systems, running through these alleyways. A lot of these clay sanitary lines are nearing end of life and require many, many visits from the plumbers to remove tree roots to keep them functioning. I can imagine now you double the number of fixture units, triple the number of fixture units in these homes. What is that going to do to the sanitary lines servicing these homes? Are these, are these utilities going to be upgraded if it's converted into a multifamily home? Providing adequate heating and cooling to these homes. These homes have central heat, potentially one or two that may have boilers. You're going to now have potentially multiple levels where you have to add heating and cooling to a second floor, or a first floor, or a basement. How are you going to adequately heat and cool these homes? Are we going to have just a multiple mini-split air conditioning units hung on the outside of homes, thereby heating and cooling, but also adding to electrical load in the house? Now you're going to have more transformers blowing in College Hill as you add more electrical load into the neighborhood. These are some of the things I think about when they talk about converting these homes. You talk about adding a, physical changes to the homes. A lot of these, if you add a second entrance, a lot of times, I envision homes across the neighborhood with, you know, stairways and entryways made of pressure-treated wood. That looks great for those first two or three years, but as the weather and ages now becomes just an eyesore hanging on the back of the house. I'm proud to say I've lived in College Hill for twenty years. We live in the James residence, historic residence, named after the Jameses, the first occupants of the home. Any questions for me, ladies and gentlemen?
I have some questions. So you mentioned the impact of increased utilities and the concern of that being an additional pressure. So if there were to be a, let's say, a single-family household that has to replace their sewer line or has to upgrade insulation, or whatever that is, would that not be more expensive per family than a two-household, or a three-household, or a four-household splitting that same expense?
Will you have an investor that will come in and spend $30,000 to replace that sewer line? I, will you have an investor willing to come in and properly encase all of the, to put all of that electrical into the walls where it's concealed wiring and not exposed on the outside of the home? Will they come in and do a proper load study and put in the central, the heating and cooling unit that's required? That's the question, that's the concern I have. I've been into, I've been into single-family homes in other cities, other municipalities that have been converted into condominiums where two or three families live. That, the money was invested and spent to make the, you know, convert that brownstone into multiple apartments. I fear that, you know, the kind of conversions that would be done in College Hill would not be up to those standards.
So, but my question was whether a single-family household who has to do increased insulation or sewer repairs or something, whether that's going to be more expensive for that single family than what each family in a two-family household or a three-family household, or a four-family household, which is more expensive for that family whenever they're figuring out their bills at the kitchen table?
So are you talking about who's going to, the owner of the, about who's going to replace the sewer line?
If, yeah, if someone is working on the insulation, and we know that folks in single-family houses can be renters, we know that folks in multifamily houses can be owners. So, per family that lives there, which is more expensive to replace?
Well, it would be the same cost either way. And obviously, the math would make it less per family if you were to split it equally.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Any further questions?
Anyone else from the public who wants to speak on this one?
Can I ask you a question?
So this isn't really set up for a great deal of like back and forth between folks.
Well, in terms of your question, the last speaker's speaking, can you come on? Sorry.
It was in regards to your question of this last speaker.
All right.
And you asked, well, you made the statement that you know that there are families, like in College Hill, that there are several families already owning one of these historic homes, or something like that? The thing is, so my question is, is that really the scenario you foresee? That's not what's going to happen. They're not going to, people aren't going to, three families are not going to buy a hundred-year-old house and say, "That's our home." They're going to be renters. Now, if the question is, are homeowners willing to do that? Yes. I mean, I just spent $4,000 when we moved in, insulating our house. I just spent $8,000 glazing sixty-two windows in our house so that it lasts another hundred years. So yes, homeowners are willing to invest in Topeka. Absentee landowners are not going to do that work. They'll do the minimum. And those are not going to be owned by those people. They're going to be rented. So, but it's a great question, that people are willing to invest. Renters don't. But thank you so much. I apologize for taking your time, but thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing on this and return to any discussion by commissioners.
I will just say, the likely process here would be a, more than likely, coming back in August for a public hearing on the item.
All right. Any discussion by commissioners? Just discussion by commissioners?
I'm sorry, do you want a committee report?
No. Just before we go to the report, any discussion by commissioners on what we just, we're talking about? All right.
I have a comment.
Yep?
I have a comment. I appreciate everybody's comments today and just how much you, you know, enjoy your neighborhood and how much you care about your neighborhood. And as we're discussing this, the Planning Commission doesn't take your comments lightly. We're thinking about not only your neighborhood, but the entire city, and also generations to come. Because affordability is not stagnant. It's going up, and we need housing. Unfortunately, when you're thinking about the 11% of blight, a lot of it is concentrated in areas that, you know, may not be favorable. But every single comment and thought is taken into consideration as we think about the entire city and the land use of every single citizen and what's going to be best for every single person.
Yeah?
I have a question for staff. I know this is a large what-if because we're still thinking through conditional use permits. However, if a property, and this is a complete just what-if, but if a property is going to have some kind of updating to it, such as being turned from a single family to a multifamily, would part of the requirements be that permitting be done on any of those changes?
It's more than likely, yes.
And so when the permitting process is done, does the city come out and inspect every single one of those changes to make sure they're done up to code?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing else on that item, um, I believe it is, lost my agenda. Uh, the next discussion item is on the Monroe School overlay district rezoning. So I believe that that will start over with staff.
Correct. I will kick this off just, um, just to let the room clear. Uh, so we've talked about this a couple of times with the commission, just to remind folks. Uh, you initiated the rezoning and the text amendments at your last meeting. So Mike is gonna go over the draft standards and we'll come back for a public hearing on this item next month.
All right, so, uh, I have a few slides here. Some of these we can go through pretty quickly. Uh, they're really kind of reminders from what we talked about before. So briefly process, UNESCO and the World Heritage Sites, overlay district. Overlay district is a prerequisite for being nominated as part of the serial nomination. Very important to know that. Uh, and then the proposed overlay district. So where we're at in the process, as you can see, we've had a few meetings, quite a few meetings. Uh, last week, Landmark's Commission completed a certified local government review, which is required when something affects, uh, the landmarks such as the Monroe School. Um, and we are in the process, we've pretty much announced it, uh, that this is gonna be on the July meeting agenda, uh, public hearing, uh, and that'll be a text amendment and a zoning map amendment to create the district. So you might recall that, uh, the Brown v. Board Museum, uh, and the Monroe School is part of a serial nomination potentially, uh, and it's in some really esteemed company, including the Lorraine Motel, uh, the site of the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. Uh, I won't mention the others, but they're all very notable. Um, some of these you might recognize. Um, okay, so this, there's three pillars that are required, uh, to support this nomination. One of them is that, uh, the property meets the requirements for protection and management. That's where the overlay district would come in. So as part of the nomination component, must have adequate long-term legislative, regulatory, institutional, and traditional protection to safeguard the integrity. Must have an identified buffer zone with legal restrictions on its use and development. An overlay district, an overlay district does not replace the zoning currently in place, but instead adds a layer of provisions or restrictions. I think you kind of understand that, so I won't go over the example unless you need me to. So in this case, uh, this, this red border that you see on the, on the map on the right, that's the area that's proposed to be in the overlay district. It includes four different zoning classifications, different zoning districts, 39 properties, includes a mix of uses, and includes five vacant lots. Um, the purpose of the overlay district is to preserve and enhance the character of the neighborhood surrounding Monroe School. The overlay district is an overlay district. Use and development within the district must comply with the standards of this district and the underlying zoning district. So, very important point here, land use is rendered non-conforming by the proposed overlay district standards will be allowed to continue with some limitations on expansion of those uses. And that's covered in the zoning code. Existing resident, excuse me, existing zoning, as you can see on the map, there's a lot of yellow there. There's a lot of gray. So, uh, R1, single-family residential, M1, M2, um, and existing non-residential zoning is O-N-I-1, I-1 light industrial, I-2 heavy industrial. So just some photos, character of the existing residential areas in the area. One on the left is, is, uh, 17th Street and the one on the right is Quincy. It's right behind the, uh, Monroe School. The industri, areas that are zoned industrial, uh, this is looking, uh, to be south down Monroe and the school is kind of on the right, kind of obscured by some of the trees. Image on the left is looking, uh, west on 15th and the one on the right is looking west on 17th. So, um, in the draft, the prohibited uses are kind of, I guess, have some certain characteristics. So a lot, some of these are very automobile-intensive uses, tend to drive a lot of traffic, uh, tend to have aspects that are, that could really alter the character, but actually currently are allowed by right in industrial districts. So the way our zoning districts work, yes, some of the industrial districts do allow by right, uh, retail commercial uses. Um, the other category here is outdoor storage. Uh, outdoor storage is always a possibility when you have industrial zoning and it tends to look unsightly and tends to look worse over time. There are a lot of examples of that.
Did you consider putting, uh, packaged liquor stores, taverns on that list?
That's not listed. Uh, so we don't have that specific, as a specific list. That falls in the category of retail sales in our, according to our zoning code. We don't have like a separate use listed for liquor stores. But it's not, it's not in this draft. Could it be considered to be added? I'd, I'd say if you did that, you'd probably, it'd probably be retail sales. I, I don't know.
Just a couple of uses that come to mind.
Okay. Um, okay, so, and then there's some heavy industrial uses on here as well. So things like a demolition landfill, uh, raw materials extraction, not likely to happen here. But manufacturing processing type three, that's, think, uh, slaughterhouses and things that create noxious smells and that kind of thing. Um, recycling depot, there's a recycling depot actually to the northeast of this site or this area. Um, and salvage yards. The other thing on here are signs, certain types of signs. So billboard signs currently allowed by right. There are standards that apply, but those are allowed by right in industrial districts. Uh, drive-through establishments. Okay, so these uses here would be conditional uses in the draft. Again, it's a draft. It's for your discussion and consideration. Uh, and, uh, automobile services type two, so that's auto repair. That's like a tire shop or a minor auto repair. Doesn't include major drivetrain repair, that kind of thing, or body shops. Um, public utility facility, uh, self-storage. So self-storage currently, self-storage type two, that's your typical storage units where you access them from outside and also includes RV storage, outdoor storage. That would be a conditional use. Uh, outdoor storage would be a conditional use as a principal use. Okay, outdoor storage as an accessory use. So this is a very important distinction because there are a lot of uses that have, usually have some outdoor storage. And I'm thinking really of contractor yards, contractor shops. When you have a contractor shop and office, a lot of times they'll have a building, but they'll have some outdoor storage. So what this is saying is, it could, it would still be permitted as an accessory use. It would just be limited in size and have to be screened from view. So dimensional standard. So, uh, key thing here is, keep in mind that industrial districts, there are no building setbacks required unless it's across the street or adjacent to a residential zoning. Uh, there's no building setbacks required. Um, the building height in the I-1 district, I believe, is, I wanna say it's 75 feet. I could be off a little bit, but it's pretty tall. Uh, I-2, there's no, there's no, uh, height restriction. So in this case, it'd be limited, height would be limited to 32 feet. So these are the standards that apply to non-residential, by the way, non-residential uses. Um, so 32 feet, the Monroe School is approximately 42, 45 feet tall. Open storage, so any open storage visible from the street would have to be sit, set back, uh, or, excuse me, would have to be screened by fencing and landscaping. Fences, so on certain streets, uh, fences would be limited to a height of four feet in the 20-foot, in the, in the first 20 feet of the property, the 20-foot setback unless they were of a certain design. So in other words, like a, think about like a six-foot tall galvanized chain-link fence. This would not allow that along the front property line, along those streets. Freestanding signs, so this would limit signs, their height and size to the types of signs that are allowed in, uh, office districts and residential districts. So just to give you some reference point for the height, so, uh, 32 feet, that seems pretty restrictive, but this building here has a height at the eve of 26 feet, at the p, at the ridgeline of 31 feet. Uh, this is a pretty tall industrial building. This is a typical, in fact, this is a building that was built within the past few years in Topeka. It allows, uh, a lot of activity, a lot of different types of use of that, uh, building. Here's an example of a building that has a height of 30 feet. And this is, I believe this one was built recently as well. So this is just an illustration, shows you where that setback line would, would fall, where it would apply. So this is along that block of Monroe. Again, this is a building setback and it would limit fence height. And then this is what that would look like along 17th and 15th Streets. So in the residential districts, the, the standards that, that are, that apply to the residential zoning, there aren't a lot here. It limits height, building height to 32 feet. 32 feet's really tall for a residential, for a residence. Uh, keep in mind with a residence with a gable roof, the, the height is measured not at the ridgeline or the peak. It's measured at the average height of the highest gable on the, on the building. So this isn't very restrictive, honestly. Um, new construction, house additions would have to be of an architectural design compatible with the existing principal building. Um, formal materials, accessory buildings would have to be architecturally compatible with principal build, principal building unless located to be invisible from the public street. And accessory buildings would, could, would not be permitted any closer to the street than the, than the facade of the building. That generally applies now, but this makes it a little bit clearer that you cannot do it. Uh, for sites with alley access, vehicular access shall be from the alley and not from the street. Think about those, uh, those photos I showed you earlier, residential character. That's, that's key to that character. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or take any comments you have.
Can you go back to that?
Which one?
The, the standards, the residential.
Okay.
Yeah. So number five there would be new access, new property access, because there are a number of.
Yes.
Houses particularly along, uh, 17th Street that have driveways because they don't have an alley.
Questions?
When it says principal building, what, what does that mean? Is it talking about the Brown versus Board Building or?
No, so, uh, in the residential sense, the principal building is usually the house. An accessory building would be like a detached garage or a shop building or a shed. And it's a little bit more ambiguous with industrial land use, but there are, I think you could, an accessory building would be a small building on the site. Yeah.
Thank you.
Would structures currently in the area that don't meet these standards be grandfathered in?
Yes. It's possible to write standards that would not do that, but that would be very unusual in Topeka.
So there was the, excuse me, the red line that kind of gave the boundary, uh, which was very clear. Um, but then there was the bubbled line for the buffer.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, it, it like touches part of properties and, you know, you know, it kind of goes through half of one property or what. So what does the buffer line mean for someone where it goes through part of your property? Maybe it, like a tiny little bit touches it. What does that buffer line do?
The area outside the red boundary, the standards would not apply at all.
Thank you.
The buffer is only, uh, we have it in there to show where we send the notice, so.
Thank you.
Sending notification. Yeah.
So help me understand the red line and where you decided to draw it. That V shape. Make sure there's a lot of buildings that are within view and could be considered part of the neighborhood of Brown at the site that is not included in it. Can you tell me why you decided to do that?
Yeah, I think Dan might have to help me out here, but we, we, uh...
I missed that last week. I apologize.
Well, so we, I, I think our approach to this was, don't make it any larger than it has to be to accomplish the purpose.
Okay.
You could argue that it should be bigger. You might argue that it could be smaller. For example, you, why include those parks spaces? Well, maybe they're not gonna be park spaces forever. Um, we-
Well, the park spaces are part, part of them are part of the site themselves.
Sure, sure, yeah. I'm thinking of the ones that are owned and operated by, or maintained by the Penn County. But, but, uh, so we had a lot of discussion with, uh, Georgia State University. Georgia State University is, is really leading this effort to, on the serial nomination. And, uh, at one time, our boundary was a little smaller. Uh, at one time, it was, took in a little bit more to the west, I believe. Um, but that, I think that is kind of the rationale for the boundary. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think that we're trying to capture the area that's, could be most impacted to the school. So that's really what's nearest to it, but also try to capture some of the kind of significant buildings that are still left and maybe not so much the ones that aren't significant anymore. So that's why it kind of gerrymanders down and, uh, to the south of 17th Street and captures that big industrial building there because that's been there a long time and, and picks up a little more. But it doesn't continue going down 17th Street because there's just not significant, um, structures there. Uh, that, that should be part of this, I guess. And so on 15th Street where it kind of wraps behind the railroad there, it picks up some older buildings and we didn't necessarily have that in before. So, uh, we've just been working through this, um, with Georgia State and, because like Mike said, it was bigger, then it got smaller, then it got bigger. So we've just been a process of trying to get what's most, what could be most impactful to the school with, if something happened. Um, and what, and some of the feedback we got from Georgia State is height, building height is really, um, a big consideration. So where, but where are building heights gonna be most impactful? And that's really right next to the school, for example.
So they consider the buildings behind the school because they're residential?
So we captured the buildings immediately to the west behind the school along, um, Quincy. But we didn't go across the street and capture the ones farther to the west. So we kept it tight to the, the block that's immediately adjacent to the school.
I guess I'm more worried about the triangle that is part of the park and the buildings that sit across from them. Some of them have been there, have always been a part of that neighborhood and that's what's part of the story is that it's industrial in nature. So I don't know that anyone's gonna tear them down and put pretty houses up, but I guess it's just, I guess I would have expected those buildings to stay in. It's just a thought.
Are, are you referring to the buildings on the north side of 17th and the south side of, or, excuse me, the south side of 17th and north side of 15th?
Well, Mike, I really have to know my directions. The V, the pointy V, that's like Cushionberry Park.
Yeah.
In yellow, yeah. I, I'm talking about those buildings along both sides of there.
Yeah, and I think some of the feedback we got was that there's just, you know, we're capturing the stuff that was there, um, you know, when the schools are, there's some very modern buildings along 17th Street, the south side of 17th Street that, that were not.
Okay, as long, I thought they were more historic in nature, but perhaps not.
Yeah, I, I think we captured what was most important there. Um, because we didn't have that big, that big structure immediately south of the school's parking lot, but we, we ended up including that. And they're quite for the project, actually, which was a nice surprise, so. And they're quite for the project, actually, which was a nice surprise, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Dan, procedurally, if the time comes to approve this, will the overlay zoning, rezoning for each parcel be handled separately or in one fell swoop?
We'll do it in one ordinance, basically. We'll, we'll have a zoning case that's one ordinance because of the way we're doing it. We're doing this notification boundary, so.
Will the planning commission need to take action on each parcel separately?
No.
No, you'll, no, you'll take action on the rezoning case and take action on the text amendment to create, so to take action on the text amendment to create the overlay and then the rezoning to implement the overlay. Just area-wide rezoning, not, not one by one. It'll be one ordinance. Hopefully that made sense.
Any other questions? All right. Then I believe we are ready for the report from our standing committee.
Well, Mike earlier pretty much covered everything that we did at the last meeting we had back in, in May 29, which was primarily discussing of the discussion of the draft, duplex, triplex, fourplex text amendment to, in the R1, R2 districts. Have we had some extended discussion about the conversion issue and about how that was a hot point for a lot of folks. Committee is meeting again on July 26, which is a week from Thursday, I believe. And we're going to meet with Trey George from the Topeka Housing Authority. If you recall, under the bylaws of the, of the standing committee, we're to be reaching out and have a liaison or a relationship with different housing interest groups in the city. So, we're going to try to start that at the, at the next meeting with having Trey, who's the president of the, of the THA. And we also have Terrence Stephens, who is with the 3D House Printing outfit that is here in Topeka now. And they've set up, they're having a demonstration, not, not at our meeting, unfortunately, but they're going to meet and talk about what their plans are in Topeka and see if there's any way in which the, the city's development code could be improved upon to make their life easier. And we don't, we don't know of any instance like that, but we wanted to open the door to them and, and if, if there's something that's an impediment to their success, we'd like to know what it is so we can deal with it. So, that's that.
All right. Then we will move on to communications to commission.
So, an update on the Maverick project. There was a successful protest petition filed, so that will require, so it normally would have gone tomorrow to the planning commission, or to the governing body, but they won't have everybody there, so it's going to July 1st, because they need a full vote to vote on protest petition cases. So, that requires a supermajority to approve. So, I guess stay tuned for that one. You have a full meeting next month. Again, there's five zoning cases and.
Include this one, there's five. A text amendment.
So, five cases and a text amendment. So. So, just, so we sent some information to the governing body last week, this week. We're, we're turning ahead on most major things that we deal with, zoning, Platts, and, ahead of last year. So, we're actually, we are a little busier than we were last year.
The question, is it a protest thing that you mentioned? Is it, can you clarify what it was, what it was for? Just because
Yeah.
As we're sitting up here making recommendations or voting on things, it'd be nice to know the perspective.
So, a protest petition can be filed after your action. So, and they have fourteen days after your action to, and they need twenty percent of the landowners.
Land area.
Land area to get notarized signatures that they are, they're signing a protest petition. And we, we get it usually right at the last second and we, we run the, we calculate and make sure it's valid. And then, so what that does, it forces a, a higher bar to approve, for the governing body to approve your recommendation or not.
Do we understand what they were protesting?
The use of the property as a.
Yeah, generally, no, no additional detail is given. Sometimes there are letters, but.
Specifically, okay.
Yeah. I would imagine that, given the fact that case was supposed to be tomorrow, until it was moved, I think we'll get quite a bit of general public comment at tomorrow night's council meeting regarding the project, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just remind us what the project was?
The Maverick, the convenience store, Sixth and Fairlon?
The Halladome.
It required a major amendment to the existing PUD zoning. I thought it was a rezoning.
Then we'll move on to general public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will adjourn.